Only one page left printed.
Are we doing both of them?
You got everybody? Welcome to the regular meeting of the Cape Coral City Council. Today is June 14th, 2023. This meeting now comes to order. Please stand for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Hayden.
I had a colleague this week at my other job who just passed her test to become a U.S. citizen after a three-year process. So he's sworn in in a week or two. But just the glow on her face to achieving something that meant so much to her, how much freedom meant to her, how much opportunity meant to her. And I tie that to a special day-to-day with Flag Day and how much those freedoms are and those opportunities are in our flags. And as we remember what that means ahead of our greatest of Independence Day, July 4th, coming up, and how those freedoms resonate and how we think about those who have made sacrifices to protect those freedoms and those who continue to make sacrifices to continue protections, opportunity, and those freedoms. And I ask, and I ask our Lord to continue to guide us, to help us understand our freedoms, our rights, in the way that they were intended. And I can't think of a better time to please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Mayor Gunter?
Here.
Councilmembers, Costin?
Here.
Cummings?
Here.
Hayden?
Here.
Long?
Here.
Shepherd?
Here.
Steinkie?
Here.
Welsh?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Item five is changes to the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda, or do we have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six is recognitions and achievements. I think we have a presentation today for city employees for years of service. At this time, I would like to recognize the following employee for their outstanding service and dedication to the city of Cape Coral. I want to thank them for their contribution to the city and all the efforts that they put into their daily responsibilities to make this city a better place. Thank you for being such a valuable member to our organization and our team. Madam City Clerk, once I make my way down to the front of the dais, would you please read the name of the recipient along with their years of service who are currently in the audience? As your name is called, please come forward to receive your award and stand with me for a quick picture.
Richard Jones, years of service, 21 years.
Once again, congratulate Mr. Jones in his 21 years of service. He just recently retired, and we wish you all the best with any future endeavors that you may have. Madam City Clerk, also, we should have another individual. Please read the name of the recipient who was unable to attend tonight's presentation. We want to make sure that everyone is recognized, even if they can't be here physically.
Patrick Guyer, years of service, 30 years.
And once again, congratulations on achieving this milestone, 30 years of service with our city. So we thank you for all your contributions to make our city a better place. With that, I'll move on to 6B to continue on our recognitions. Mr. City Manager, it looks like we have Series Environmental Services.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This award is a thank you recognition for our Hurricane Ian debris removal contractor and the countless hours that their staff put into getting our city restored to the way it was on September 27th. I can't say enough about this crew that I'm about to introduce and what they did for our city, the things that we went through, myself and Terry Schweitzer, our Solid Waste Director. I'm pleased to present this thank you award to Series Environmental Services for their outstanding work in helping Cape Coral recover from the devastating impact of Hurricane Ian. Series crews and their subcontractors removed over 1,965,050 cubic yards from the city streets in Cape Coral in four months, beginning October 5th through January 28th. At the peak of the operations, Series and their staff had 150-plus trucks removing 40,000 cubic yards a day. Series also began canal debris removal on November 7th, wrapping up operations at the end of April. In all, they removed 742,918 cubic yards of debris from our canal using both land-based and water-based crews. Series Environmental Services has shown professionalism, dedication, and compassion in its work, and we are grateful for their contribution in helping restore our beautiful city. Thank you, gentlemen, for your help. Thank you. I'm going to call you all up for the plaque and some photos. So we have the Director of Client Services, Carl Dix, Regional Client Services Director, Brian Feike, Project Manager, Mike Beavers, who oversaw our entire project, Project Superintendent, Mike Dillard, and Project Manager, Mike Smith, who those two gentlemen did the upland work, and then Project Superintendent Chad Dorsey, who handled the waterways. I'd like to present this thank you award presented to Series Environmental Services in recognition of your hard work and outstanding dedication to the city of Cape Coral for helping Cape Coral recover from the devastating impacts in 2022 from Hurricane Ian.
First off, thank you, Council. Thank you, Mike, for the kind words. You know, obviously, we cannot do this without a strong leader and strong leadership at the city. And, you know, first and foremost, I would just like to thank Chief Terry, Mike I, we have Wanda, we also have Mark, that were instrumental in allowing us to be able to do our jobs. And then the great leadership provided by this city council during one of the most trying times of my memory and certainly a lot of our memories here throughout the state of Florida. So, you know, it takes a team effort. And what we appreciate most is that we had a playbook, and all we had to do was come in and execute on that playbook. And that was the direct leadership of staff and council. So with that, this is very humbling, and we appreciate the recognition. So thank you very much to staff, city council, and then, of course, all the residents of Cape Coral and their understanding throughout this entire process. Thank you.
Yeah, also, I'd like to thank you as well. I know the city council, I would like to thank you as well. We appreciate you being there for us in a time of need, and you surely were contributed to getting us through that event that hopefully no other city will have to go through again. But we appreciate you having our backs, and please go back and thank all the employees, all your subcontractors. Like you said, it was a team effort, and we really appreciate everything that you did for our community. So thanks. Okay, Mr. City Manager, it looks like 6C on the agenda is Community Recognition Award for Oasis Middle School.
This is our Community Recognition Award. Tonight's award is going to Oasis Middle School and the Making for Good program. The Making for Good classes were initially conceptualized by Oasis Charter Schools K-12 STEM Education Director, Dr. John Mudsmann, and the Oasis Charter Schools Registered Nurse Melanie Clages. This year, teacher Jenny Schoonover taught two classes of students in the Making of Good classes. The students modified teddy bears to be inclusive for children recently diagnosed with type 1 diabetes. They outfitted the teddy bears with custom T-shirts and simulated constant glucose monitors, which helps children with diabetes to feel represented in the toys that they play with. The 45 students donated 90 teddy bears to patients at Galizano Children's Hospital. And we have a Community Recognition Award. That is, says Community Recognition Award 2023. The city of Cape Coral is pleased to recognize your accomplishments. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Again, congratulations. Definitely an award well deserved. Okay, Mr. City Manager, 6D under recognitions. We have Fleet Award.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our own Fleet Division within the city of Cape Coral's Public Works Department actually had received two awards, so we're going to present them both to Fleet tonight. The first one is the 100 Best Fleets. The city of Cape Coral's Fleet Services earned a spot on the 100 Best Public Fleets list. This year is the seventh consecutive year Cape Coral has been recognized with this prestigious Top 100 Annual Award. Let me restate that. This year is the seventh consecutive year Cape Coral has been recognized. The National Association of Fleet Administrators ranked Cape Coral number 58 out of 100, surpassing larger cities like Phoenix and Orlando. The 100 Best Fleets program is open to all public fleets in the North and South America, recognizing peak performing fleet operations and encourages performance improvement and innovation within the public fleet industry. Cape Coral's Fleet Services aims to provide vehicle and equipment acquisitions, preventative maintenance, repairs, fueling services to all departments, and then look to ensure employees have a safe, reliable, and cost-effective equipment to accomplish their department's operational goals. This is your plaque from 100 Best Fleets. It says, "Congratulations to the city of Cape Coral Fleet Services, recognized in the 100 Best Fleets, number 58, April 2023." And again, this is their seventh year in the top 100 in North and South America. One more. The city of Cape Coral's Fleet Division has earned a spot in the top 50 government-leading fleets in the U.S. and Canada. The Top 50 Government Fleets program recognizes operations performing at a high level, particularly fleet leadership, competitiveness, efficiency, planning for the future, and overcoming challenges faced within the fleet operations. The Fleet Division maintains and services an assortment of over 1,700 assets, ranging from bobcats all the way up to fire trucks. The city's fleet encompasses 10 departments, including highly physical response vehicles from public works, utilities, fire, police, and our buses for our city's charter schools. This is Government Leading Fleets presented to the city of Cape Coral Fleet Services for their recognition as one of the Top 50 Fleets 2023. Different organization, top 50.
Yeah, on behalf of city council, I'd like to congratulate you as well. You know, when you have outstanding leadership and an outstanding staff, you have outstanding results. And as you can see, year after year, that's exactly what this group and individuals have. So congratulations and thank you for all your hard work throughout the year. Okay, item nine, 9A, is Consent Agenda. Oh, now, I'm sorry. Go back here a second. I'm sorry, item eight is Citizens Input Time. Citizens input is a maximum of 60 minutes. It is set on input from citizens on matters concerning city government. Three minutes per individual. Please remember to state your name. We will utilize both podiums. We will alternate back and forth. Just remember, it's a professional meeting. We won't have any outbursts, or we won't have any applauding, please. And first individual, go ahead and start.
Well, I was going to say. Want to put that on the whatever it is.
Do you want to get out?
Yeah, Laurie, yeah.
No.
How do I do this? I have no idea.
Excuse me?
Hello, my name is Bob O'Connor.
Hold on for a second, sir.
Have not been reviewed.
Yeah, if you have any documentation that you're going to put on the overhead, it has to be approved by our city clerk first, please.
She has to sign off on that.
I'm sorry, sir, go ahead.
My name is Bob O'Connor. I live in the development Banyan Trace on Palm Tree Boulevard in Cape Coral. And I recently became aware of the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery. I read an article in the Cape Coral Breeze, and there was some conflicting reporting that I wasn't sure if the city of Cape Coral was submitting for some damage through the city itself or to Lee County. So either way, I don't think it's a plausible recommendation to utilize the old golf course for any development, let alone residential, affordable housing, or senior housing. The 175 acres that encompasses the development that I live in acted as a sponge during Hurricane Ian. And the next morning, when I woke up, there weren't any puddles in the parking lot. And it can be attributed to the green space that surrounded us. And any development going forward, I think, hinders that use in the future. So the highest and best, what would the highest and best use for that property be? I think most people feel it should remain a park, not developed, maybe put an amphitheater in there. I've heard some people tell me they think it could be turned into a reservoir and utilize the lakes that are created for city water instead of getting it funneled over from Fort Myers. But anyway, that's not what I'm here for. Basically, I don't think it's a good idea for the council to recommend using this disaster relief fund for any type of housing, whether it's affordable or senior housing, on the old golf course. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, ma'am, you're next.
Okay, my name is Sarah. I live in Southwest Cape. I'd like to make a few comments on Sands Park, which costs the taxpayers 3.3 million. I personally enjoyed the parks and voted yes on the projects. Had I known that Sands Park finished would look as it does today, would have never voted for any of them. Building a home in Cape Coral has strict code compliances, which I am in favor of as it keeps building standards high. Why isn't that standard applied to all projects in Cape Coral? Why did we get a beautiful artist rendering of what the park would look like and got a horrific, ugly park instead? It is an eyesore. Who approved final payment on this catastrophe in a neighborhood filled with million-dollar homes? Trees are planted, they're dead, they're brown, the park looks like a mosquito-infested swamp. I believe that the residents of Cape Coral voted yes on the park referendum and based our votes on the aesthetics and gorgeous landscaping of the artist's rendering. If this is what we can expect for future parks, please don't go any further. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Derek Frazier, District 5, retiree from the city of Cape Coral six years ago, from the Facilities Management Division. I was the city rougher pertaining to the yacht club down there. The building is structurally sound, everybody knows this. What the question is, is the cost of the infrastructure. And I challenged the numbers that have been proposed as invalid, inflated, and totally unreasonable. Say six-plus condensing units on the outside of the building, virtually unhurt. I walked the perimeter May the 30th. If these weren't damaged, why are we replacing them? The plumbing, somebody explained to me where the plumbing problem exists in this building. You have plumbing in the bathrooms, you have plumbing in one little bathroom in the office, nothing in the main ballroom. There is no plumbing problem. That was replumbed years back. We had substantial problems with the sewer lines and the water lines. That was all addressed. The plumbing in that building is CPVC and is good as new. I don't know what other problems were addressed by a consultant, but I can guarantee you, I don't trust the numbers. There is no way in the world we have $3 million that we need to put into this building to bring it up to snuff. You have an air conditioner that's 10 years old, still functioning. The equipment down there today that was functioning the day before Hurricane Ian is functioning today as soon as you get the utilities hooked up to them. There's no problems down there of the magnitude of $3 million, not even close. The roof system had been maintained for years and is still able to be maintained. If the city had someone qualified to do that, and they do not at this present time. I took care of that roof, I kept it watertight 10 years ago, 2012, 2013, the city was aware that this roof was failing. You saw the reasons, I emailed you. It was poor design and just lack of proper material, et cetera, et cetera. It can still be a viable roof. The whole building is still a viable building, you do not need to knock it down. And as the words of one of the council members, "I'm pissed that this thing was described as totally trashed and an unsafe structure." That is totally false and untrue, and I take exception from that, and the council member responsible deserves a city of Cape Coral an apology for misleading everybody. Sir, have you been to that? Has anybody in the council been down there and visited this property? Show of hands. Thank you very much. Those, Mr. Shepherd, you said you've been down there?
Sir, you do not.
Address the council members. He made them, I agree.
Collectively as a council.
That's my time.
Go ahead, sir.
Afternoon, Mayor and Council. Joe Mazurkis, President BGM Consulting are here initially in this presentation on behalf of the Red Fish Point HOA. Those of the people that live around the yacht club, just once again reminding you as you go into Resolution 15223, of all the conditions that your previous staff worked with, with the neighboring properties to make sure that the new design would protect the value and the serenity of their homes surrounding that yacht club. Light pollution, sound pollution, and making sure that it is landscaped appropriate to enhance the view across the canal. Now I'd like to speak as just Joe Mazurk with Citizen. Interestingly enough, Flag Day is 40 years ago today that I announced for mayor of Cape Coral at the Cape Coral Yacht Club. That doesn't make it historic, it makes it important to me, but it doesn't make it historic. What makes this historic is that when this city contemplated incorporation, the meetings prior to incorporations, the talk about the initial charter regarding corporations all occurred at the yacht club. It's our Independence Hall. It has been the site for political debates, for the midpoint bridge, for the parallel span, for UEP, for everything substantial done in this city since the inception of this city. this city. You can't just send it down the road. And you don't have to. You can do what you want with the rest of that site, just rehab and bring up the code if you need be for the 50% rule, by waterproofing the bottom part of the yacht club. You can have it both ways. Preserve the building, preserve the history, and recognize the commitment and the people who made this city what it is today. I know the last time you were mad at the people who came before you because you said they left you this problem. You know, that happened to every elective body ever in this history. The people that came before you did great things, and they also made mistakes. The maintenance, the deferred maintenance of the yacht club was a mistake, but that's something that needs to be corrected going forward. I do not blame the councils in front of me for not fixing the Everest Parkway plant that was mechanically overloaded. I did not blame them for not putting water and sewer in the city, that we had to do it, 14 square miles all at once. We just step up and do it. That's part of the gig of being elected official and being a leader in the community. Take what's given to you and make it better. You know, we talked about, somebody mentioned that this, you know, the bones of this structure were broken. Well, you know, if your mother breaks a hip, you don't put her down, you let her heal, and you make it better, and you take for the life as much as she's got. Thank you.
Thank you. As I stated in the beginning, we will not have any applause, please. Go ahead, ma'am.
Good afternoon. My name is Eileen Vinesia. I'm here today to voice my opposition to the Red Fish Point Mixed Use Preserve Land Use District proposed south of Rotary Park. The proposed development would include constructing a road going east, starting at Rose Garden Boulevard, straight through land under conservation easement, just along the southern edge of Rotary Park. This past May, towards the end of the dry season, I took a walk in Rotary Park. There was still a lot of water in the lakes. Usually, the water level is very low. The trails around the lakes and in the back were damp, and this was months since we had seen any significant amount of rain. Early archaeological reports state that all the land in Piney Point is either poorly drained or very poorly drained. What is the land like where they plan to build a road and where they plan to build the units, hotels, stores, parking garage, and office buildings? I can only imagine the amount of dredging that will have to be done just to build the road. How many trucks will be going up and down Pelican Boulevard, bringing fill to the site? Will Pelican Boulevard be destroyed by so much heavy traffic? How many mangroves will be destroyed for this development? These are the same mangroves that protected all the surrounding land, houses, and other buildings such as Rotary Park. Look at pictures of the streets that were flooded, Rose Garden, Eldorado, and Southwest First Court. As much water was in the streets, there would have been much, much more flooding without the barrier of the mangroves, just where they proposed to build Red Fish Point. In the future, when insurance companies look at claims filed and determine their policy rates, the fact that so much of this natural protection has been destroyed may just limit the properties that they insure or even raise the rates. And maybe they will refuse to even insure the houses. Again, not only will this be an environmental nightmare, but will also have a negative financial impact on the residents of Cape Coral and ultimately the city itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Mayor, distinguished 48-year citizen of the Cape Coral. I know it's moot. You sunset all these advisory boards, but you made a real big mistake. And I totally agree with Mr. Mazurkowitz. Why would you have a youth board and sunset it into some silly, I don't even know what you, you just put names on it. You're wrong. Students learn from that board. Ms. Brunz, nobody could ask for anyone better to mentor it. You're wrong, you need to put it back. I don't care what you did, and you say, you're, the kids learn. Where else will they learn? I was slated to go to Boy State like a million years ago, and I couldn't afford it. This is wonderful. Mayor Joe, ex-Major Joe Mazurkowitz, is correct. You're wrong, you better change it. You're wrong about the yacht club. The charter, I read the charter, I'm not sure you all do. I did not see exactly where it said to sunset these boards like the Constitution of the state of Florida. I'd like you to, you know, kind of clue us all in. I did a little math. You save 950 bucks, I'm sorry, 950 hours, but you blow millions to outside attorneys, 200K for our city attorney, millions for the Loch Ness monster, this, that, the other. Sue me too, I remember that. Well, why are you worried about 950 hours? Now, I did a little math, mayor. I calculated, you can take me to task. You're making about $50 an hour for what you do. Now, if I have the wrong figures, bring them back after hiatus. You know? I think you guys are getting un-American. And is there any chance we can sunset you all? I know we could go back to just being with the county like Duval in Jacksonville. Don't wreck the yacht club either. You better listen to Mr. Mazurkowitz, the man has wisdom. And by the way, give these people you give accolades to a $100 gift card, a piece of paper. I got two pins from the school board. It said "Made in China," and I threw them away a couple years ago. Thank you, mayor, thank you, council.
Your mask is on there. Oh, thank you, sweetheart. Go ahead, ma'am.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. My name is Donna Miola, and I'm a 48-year resident of this city. My parents raised me here, my children were raised here, and now my grandchildren also call Cape Coral a home. It is my hope that the yacht club ballroom will be saved from demolition, to preserve the last historic site for future generations, to enjoy the architecture of what was the beginning of our hometown. I actually questioned myself whether I would speak tonight or not. I sat in chamber last week, listening to the icons, the founding families speak from their hearts, imploring you to understand the importance of preserving the last historic piece of Cape Coral that is left. I was horrified of the unprofessionalism of some of the members of council. I witnessed shuffling papers, rolling of eyes, and actually chewing gum so loudly I could hear them in the back row. I did not speak last week because I truly believed you would agree with the families who made Cape Coral what it is today. Never, ever in my 48 years, and there is a council member up here that knows I have spoken at many meetings, did I think that while listening to council comments, that after citizens' input, that I would hear a phrase like, "Why are you making us the bad guys?" I don't get it. Bad guys? You truly have the ability to be the good ones, the ones who save history in Cape Coral. During council members' comments that evening, a citizen was called out for not fundraising to keep the ballroom from needing the repairs it needs today, and asked her why she didn't fundraise to have these repairs done over the years. The saddest part to me of this comment, other than a sitting council person not knowing it is not the responsibility of citizens to save a city-owned building, had that person been approached by city, she would have been the first one out here raising the money for that building. And those founding families that spoke to you, they would have been on that team with her. I understand fiscal responsibility to citizens. I have a 25-plus-year career as a bank vice president. My degree is in finance, and I can confidently state that refurbishing this building will cost much less than tearing it down and building new. I completely back growth and progression. I served as the Executive Director of South Cape Hospitality and Entertainment Association for three years, and worked very closely with the CRA for the changes to the entertainment district on 47th Terrace. We have great projects going on throughout this city, and I personally cheer the growth after all these years. However, to demolish history is not progression, it is regression. I implore you to listen to your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. My name is Linda Biondi. I'm a 33-year resident of the city. The yacht club was open to the public in 1962. Last year, we actually celebrated its birthday on June 10th, 2022, to celebrate its 60th birthday. Sadly, I think we're going to have to have a memorial service for what is now being called deconstruction, not demolition. In speaking to several people, they told me the building isn't that old. Its life was only 40 years. Other cities' historic buildings are old because the cities are old. Our city is only 53 years old, as it was incorporated in 1970. Therefore, the buildings within the city are less than 100 years old. You have to start building your history somewhere, and this is your perfect opportunity. Council in 1998 did just that, but stopped before they got the national designation. My suggestion to all of you is to take a breath, pause, and think about how other cities preserve their structures and their monuments to show how their city started and how it was developed. What do we pass on to our future generations? Instead of "it's old, let's take it down," why not say "it's old, it's our history. It was the vision of the Rosen Brothers. It was built as a community for all of us in the community to enjoy, a place to gather and a place for all to enjoy, and future generations will enjoy the history of what is now a growing and evolving city." Every city builds on its past. Let's do that, and let's show them we can build on our past. Perhaps we could reconfigure the interior if you want to better serve the community with more ballrooms. But please, if not for this structure, insist that we put money in the budget. And lastly, I would just like to say, if it's $6 to $9 million to reconstruct it, then maybe we need to do that instead of the millions of dollars it's going to cost to tear it down and rebuild. It may be putting off the decision a little longer, but let's face it, once the bulldozer strikes, there is no turning back. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Go ahead, ma'am.
Carrie Lerner. As I said before, graduate of Calusa Middle School, Cypress Lake High School, Edison Community College. This is my hometown, but it has been, as I've sat these last three sessions watching the city councilors, it's been made clear to me that that has no relevance to this body. So let's talk about numbers. You have used the statement that it is, would be fiscally irresponsible to refurbish the yacht club ballroom rather than to destroy it. Well, let's look at this. You stated, gave us a huge range of what it's going to cost, you know, the number goes up every time we blink our eyes about what it will cost to refurbish it. Let's look at a $100-million project that is not as of yet funded. That's going to mean a go-bond, another go-bond, another bond. One of the city councilors last week made the statement, "We have over 100,000 households." Okay, 100,000 households, you want to end debt to the tune of $1 million per household to the taxpayers for this pet project that you have come up with. In spite of the fact that you heard from the business community through the Chamber of Commerce, you heard through multiple historical societies, you heard that there was a letter from the state indicating that we would be able to, very, very likely, with very little effort, be able to get the ballroom declared a historical site. And yet, in spite of all of this evidence, you showed complete lack of respect for our founding citizens. As was stated before, there were very many folks who came here last week. I had to leave because of the lack of respectful statements that were made. After those people came out, many of them through hardship to come here to speak to you, to plead. So let's talk about numbers. I'm pleading to you, do not burden the taxpayers of the city of Cape Coral with an unpopular and irresponsible project. Please reconsider. Please reconsider. When taxpayers are having to shell up 40, up to 40% more for their homeowners' insurance, they're not going to thank you. If you don't believe me, someone said, "Oh, well, 90% of residents support me." Well, I'd like to see the, you know, statistical data on that. But aside from that, put it to a referendum. Let's put it, let the public speak. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council staff. Gloria Tate for the record. Each of you has received the application I submitted to the state. I understand some of you have been briefed on land use code Section 2, 12019. No historic or cultural resource within Cape Coral shall be designated by any city agency except as provided in this section. Any person may propose to the city council nominations of building sites and structures for designation as historic or cultural resources based on criteria listed below. City council shall hold a public hearing within 60 days of nomination. Notice of the hearing shall be posted on the property and mailed to the owner thereof, shown on the latest available tax rolls at least 15 days prior to the date of hearing. The notice shall specify the time and place of the hearing and matter to be considered. A majority of vote of city council shall determine if the nomination is accepted. I understand council may choose to deny the designation, but I am still moving forward with my application. You are aware the state has said it's a likely candidate for that designation. Ultimately, council will have to accept or deny the designation. Prior to your vote, you are required to hold a public hearing within the 60 days, which falls before the timeline for deconstruction. You may also choose to accept the designation, not move forward with deconstruction, and hire a qualified architect and/or engineer to redesign, harden the actual interior space. The city manager has already stated that there is a pattern of systemic lack of maintenance in the parks program. When I returned to the diocese in March of 2021, it was common knowledge that the consensus was to take the building down, so why maintain a structure and keep the maintenance going? I held town hall meetings concerning the yacht club park and the ballroom. Meetings were standing room only, and people were extremely passionate about not tearing down the building. There was much said last week about fundraising. My suggestion would be to form a committee that looks at fundraising methods available to the city to support ongoing park maintenance. And give these parks back to the citizens and let them help with your fundraising. Council has also discussed the past 20 years of moving forward with greenscape and beautification. Our entire climate toward green and preservation has changed as our population has evolved. Today, we have an infusion of business owners who can afford to take part in our beautification that was not available back then. Today, almost everyone is aware of the need to be clean, beautification is on everyone's mind, and green space is essential to our well-being. In closing, I am requesting my hearing date to be determined, and that you continue to consider the slowdown or complete haul to the demolition of the Cape Coral Yacht Club Ballroom, and let the citizens take ownership of the parks and help you maintain what obviously needs help. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Good afternoon. Bob Lawson here again on the yacht club. I don't understand how you can vote to demolish the building with no real plan for replacement anytime soon or how to pay for it. The founding fathers of the Cape spared no expense in constructing that iconic mid-century building in 1961. In 1973, the developers deeded the yacht club park to the city with a restrictive covenant. It was for public use only unless residents voted otherwise by 1988, which did not happen. We brought the city's historic preservation ordinance to your attention, but so far, it's being ignored. That cannot continue. For my public records request, I have emails with the city staff being directed, quote, "Do not use the term 'historical' in public statements. Not helpful." You have no real plan to replace the city's only large community center, no funding source, but you're going to tear it down anyways on speculation. If you do, we believe the site will be a mess and sit empty for five years or longer. What a shame for the residents. So my specific requests for today are threefold. So my specific requests for today are threefold. Number one, please pause any deconstruction of the building. Number two, please do the hearings that are required by the city's historic preservation ordinance. And number three, please get an estimate, cost and timeline, to reopen the building and the park and proceed with the plan that you had pre-hurricane that was approved by the voters. That way, you will have an alternative to compare to and more information to make an informed decision on how to best proceed. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Go ahead, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Donna Germaine, President/CEO of the Chamber of Commerce of Cape Coral. As directed by our Board of Directors, the Chamber of Commerce of Cape Coral published a survey on Friday, June 9. I have included the results and will be reading them into the record. I've also emailed them to all of council. As of 3:00 PM today, the survey was emailed to our members through Constant Contact and also shared on our social media site where the original post received more than 73 organic shares. Our question was, what should the City of Cape Coral do with the historic Cape Coral Yacht Club Ballroom? One option was preserve it, the other was tear it down. 1,397 votes to preserve, 403 to tear it down, for a total of 1,800 responses. We are hoping that the council will hear the residents and look into all options before making their final decision to demolish our historic ballroom. Once it's gone, it's gone. And that building is one of our last pieces of Cape Coral history. As stated last week, our organization believes that the city can restore the ballroom to its original beauty while making the major improvements needed to the beaches and the park. And as a lifelong resident of Cape Coral, born and raised here, with many, many memories, not just as a child, but also through the chamber and different celebrations we had there, I ask that you please reconsider the decision to demolish this building. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, ma'am.
Annette Warren, Northwest Cape Coral. Longtime resident, 1986 is when my family moved us here. I went to school here. My kids have grown up here, gone to school here, went to college, came back. Many fine memories of the Cape Coral Yacht Club. I have to say, as somebody who, in a previous life, didn't really care about history all that much, I have looked back on things and wish that I have saved certain things. I'm sure all of us have wished that we've saved things and wished that we had preserved our history a little bit better. So with that being said, I would really love to see the Cape Coral Yacht Club saved, not the building destroyed. If we need to repurpose it for something a little bit better than what it is, that's fine. I mean, just keep that building, keep the bones, and do something better with the inside if that's what needs to be done. But that building belongs here. It's the beginning of our city. And if you don't stand for something, you'll fall for anything. So please, keep that Cape Coral Yacht Club building.
Thank you. Go ahead, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Janice Keim. I've been a resident for 47 years. Mayor, council members, city staff. I can't believe we are talking about demolishing the entire Cape Coral Yacht Club complex. I retired from Parks and Recreation in 2001 as the Yacht Club Manager. Those who are in favor of demolition don't have all the details. It was not damaged, as Derek told us earlier, as much as you think by the hurricane. I'm curious to know the people that went to the Yacht Club to check it out. We have not received any reports of what it was that you saw. This is the last piece of Cape Coral's history. The boathouse will be opening soon. They have first option to add additional restaurants, either in the Rotino Senior Center, the end of the pier and the drawing, the Yacht Club Ballroom, which they would be crazy not to add additional dining and bars. One of the wonderful opportunities at the Yacht Club was when you had a private event for charity, clubs, weddings, or whatever, you had a choice of what food you wanted to offer. If you wanted to do public platters or hire a caterer, it was affordable. If a restaurant were to be involved with those facilities, you would have to use them for food and drinks similar to the Weston. I cannot believe that a community over 200,000 population, that we do not have a community pool. Sunsplash is now privatized, and they do not offer any kind of swim lessons. Drowning is the leading cause of death of children under the age of five in the state of Florida. If you live in Cape Coral, you probably would have to go to Norfolk Myers or even Pine Island, that was hit extremely hard from the hurricane and is open for business for lessons. My hometown on the east side of Cleveland has about 30,000 population. And in the 60s, when they built, we had an Olympic-sized pool, not junior Olympic like the Yacht Club, that I would spend my summers growing up and eventually work through high school and college. It is a seasonal facility because it's in Cleveland. We are going backwards. We offered more opportunities for programming in the 80s and 90s than we have now. If we were to do a new Yacht Club complex, will we go back to having splash camps, sailing lessons, marine biology classes, sunset celebrations once a month? New resident clubs? I know tennis and racquetball, we're moving that to Lake Kennedy. But many more programs that won't be affordable are offered. My degree is in therapeutic recreation, and I have worked in the field for decades. I initiated special pops, sunsplash. I was the first aquatic supervisor that was hired by the city. I am very upset about Hunter's Run Golf Course, J.C. Park, food trucks at the Cape Coral Bridge, the Cape Coral Yacht Club. And I read in the breeze that the city was talking about putting affordable housing on the Cape Coral Country Club. Put a multipurpose gym or add the bandshell there instead of J.C. Park. Quality of life is just as important as fire and police, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on citizens' input? Seeing none, citizens' input is now closed. Is there any council discussion on citizens' input? Councilmember Cosden.
Yeah, I just want to respond to one thing. I just want Mr. Navarro to know that we did not dissolve the youth council. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stanky.
Thank you. Just to address a couple of points. One, as it relates to the documents that are on file, the resolutions. I can speak for only myself in telling you that I absolutely read every one of them that's involved with the historic designation. And I believe they were supplied to all members of council. I also requested all of the information as it relates to what FEMA allows and doesn't allow as it relates to the substantial improvement or substantial damage rules surrounding the 50% rule. I wanted that from the horse's mouth, so to speak. So the thought that all those facts were not investigated and considered would be, it'd be wrong to assume that because there has been a lot of investigation as it relates to this. And the others, it was stated, and I kind of being a fact and a math guy, it was stated, I believe, and maybe if it was read back, I just heard it wrong, was that if we had 100,000 households here, which we don't, and that if we had, and if it was going to be a $100-million project, which it's not been determined what it would be. And by the way, when there were costs involved with the project, it was talking about the entire Yacht Club project, not the ballroom. But even if you did the math, it wouldn't be $1 million a household. It would be $1,000 a household. So if we have, if it's a $100-million project and there's 100,000 people that'll be responsible for it, so to speak, 100,000 households, then that's $1,000 if you do the math, not $1 million per household. So just to make sure that we're dealing with the real facts, I just wanted to make sure that we knew what the real math was with those numbers. That's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Cummings.
Thank you. A couple of you guys had hit on the Old Golf Course. And I'm sorry to say that the person that wrote the letter to the editor, Michelle Shadrack, gave you misinformation, which is very typical. I can read to you what she stated in the briefs. The Old Golf Course is in District 4, Councilmember Cummings' district. And she voted for this. She campaigned for this area to be safe and a green space. Once she was on the dais, things changed. She also states that the Old Golf Course is where we voted for hub housing. So I would like to clear this up. I am sorry that this is even posted in the briefs. And this is how this stuff starts happening. Someone gives up information that's wrong, and people believe this. And I would like to bring in Mike Gilcham, our interim city manager, to clear up what we are doing with the Old Golf Course, District 4, because I don't remember voting on affordable housing on this.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Fire Chief Ryan Lamb to come up. He assisted in putting together or led the group that put together the CDBG-DR plan and what the elements were that were related to a golf course project.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Ryan Lamb, Fire Chief, Mercy Management Director. So when we put together a number of the projects for the Old Golf Course, one of the things that we were looking at, and we know that 70% of the dollars had need to be spent towards low moderate income housing and a variety of different projects. So this was a layered project potentially that was being looked at. Again, not all of the parts of this had been fully flushed out of what this was going to eventually turn into. We know that this is what's considered a brownfield site with some of the ground contaminant that is existing there. And so attempt to remediate that brownfield with the ground contaminants, provide an area for water filtration, for stormwater and potentially surge to come out and maintain a lot of green space, provide some public access. And then one of the components potentially, again, none of this is far from done, would be to incorporate some green construction and low moderate housing as a portion of that is one of the things that was being considered. Again, all of this is very much in draft as it's being brought forward.
Yeah, so clarify, a draft, not been voted on by council, correct?
It has not been voted on by council. It has not even been approved projects by the county. So we are very much in the infancy stages of this and what this would turn out to and potentially look like in the long run.
Thank you. I just want to clear up the misleading misinformation that keeps getting put out there. So thank you, Chief.
Anything else? Okay, any other council discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item 9, Business 9A is Consent Agenda. I will now open up the Consent Agenda to pull any items for discussion. Councilmember Hayden.
Yeah, I'd like to pull item 8, 15223, and item 13, 15623.
Okay, is there a motion for the remainder of the resolutions to be approved?
It's a move.
Second.
Any discussion on those items? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Shepherd.
Cosden. Stanky.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Cosden.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
Okay, item 8 on the agenda was Resolution 152-23. Councilmember Hayden, you pulled that item, so you had the floor.
Yes, sir. Mr. City Manager, can you explain a little bit? I think, believe it's task number 6, and what reconstructive preservation means and what this particular item means moving forward.
I'm going to ask Capital Improvement Office Director Paul Klingin to come up and discuss the item under that task.
Paul Klingin, Capital Improvements. The task 6 is for the design and permitting of the demolition of the buildings and deconstructive preservation of the ballroom. So that would be more, not a wrecking ball or coming in with equipment to preserve some of the, possibly the beams and the stone, whatever council decides they want preserved, that might be put into new construction.
Well, hoping for more of an explanation as far as moving forward, what this means in terms of the input that might be collected on things that might be saved inside the building and the preservation part, and what input might be taken on the deconstruction part of it.
As far as that will be part of that process when Kim Lee-Horn comes in, what will be saved? And certainly, we can put a list together, and certainly council can discuss that. Then the discussion was possibly if items in there aren't going to be reused somehow in the new construction, then possibly the museum might want some parts of that. And then there was a discussion of some kind of charity auction for parts.
Are citizens going to be involved at all in determining what might be able to be saved?
I think that would be up to council. If, maybe Mike wants to answer that.
Yeah, what we have discussed is how we would go about this process. The exact mechanism by which this is going to happen at this point, we have not nailed that down. We have discussed various items. None of them have been approved by council at this time because some of the things that have been discussed in meetings involves what may be incorporated into the future building. So the items that we've discussed specifically is having a cross-sectional committee of the community by age. So those that were here in the 50s, 60s, 70s, 80s, those that are here today, maybe some all the way down right up to the youth group to identify what elements in the ballroom would be stored or would be deconstructively preserved. Those elements then would go into the specification so that the contractor would know, okay, we need to save that chandelier, this beam, that fireplace, this piece of stone. But the exact mechanism of that has not been chosen.
So with tonight's item and moving forward, how will the deconstruction phases be rolled out as we move forward with what we're doing tonight?
Well, here's the way that this will play out. So this contractor, Kim Lee-Horn, that we all have been working with on the design of the Yacht Club, is going to put together a demolition plan. And so part of that demolition plan will include elements that the city would like collectively as a whole to be preserved. When that bid goes out, we'll have, we'll be getting back construction costs to perform that work. And so there'll be, likely will be a base bid that says, "Don't preserve anything." So what is the cost to just, you know, take it down? And then there will be that bid plus, okay, preserve the beams. And then there will be costs to a more surgical deconstruction. And the more and more items that get added to that, the cost for all those man-hours and the specific, you know, cranes and equipment. And so that's what eventually will be brought back to you. They're going to put, you know, put together a list of what we would like to be saved, develop those specifications, and then ultimately, we're going to bring that to council. And then we're going to have to put it out on the street. And then there'll be another discussion as to, do you want to go forward with? It could be upwards of, you know, half a million dollars to do more surgical work. And then we'll have another decision on, is the value there that we really want?
Okay. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Cosden.
Thank you, Mayor. So Mike, is this vote tonight formalizing the fact that it's going to be demolished? Is this the last vote we're making on this topic before demolition?
Absolutely not. This is the development of the specifications that we will be putting out on the street for contractors to bid on. So when we get those bids, if the low bid or the best value contract is awarded at that time, that would be the vote to actually perform the deconstruction.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Stanky.
Thank you. I, I wanted to make a point that in conversations with City Manager's office, I was highly in favor of having a stakeholder group amongst a variety of sectors of, of our community as it relates to a number of things. One certainly was to determine what to save in that surgical deconstruction, where that would go, in the new, in the new building, in the, in our Museum of History, in a dedicated memorial area in a new building that would be constructed, but also what the new building should, should be comprised of. And there was one age group, not just those that were born, that were here in the 60s and 70s and 80s, but also the youth of our community as far as what they would like to see, not only restored, but also what they would like to see in a new building, for, for them to have a voice in where they would hold their, their proms, where they would hold their wedding receptions in the future. And so I would, A, highly encourage a stakeholder group, a cross-demographic stakeholder group as those design plans are being put together, both for deconstruction as well as reconstruction, and, and that for sure, that it involved the youth, the future of our, of our citizens, not just the past of our citizens. Thank you.
Yeah, and for me, you know, if you read Resolution 152-23, you know, it says, "Whereas staff negotiated amendment number two for additional design phase services for the yacht club under the existing agreement utilizing the same terms and conditions and amount of $262,743.50." So I think the key words in that whole paragraph for additional design phase services, it doesn't say the wrecking ball is going to the yacht club. That says that we are going to design those types of services, and those types of services or that contract will have to come back before this board for approval. So I think that's very important to recognize exactly what we're approving, and that's exactly what that, that resolution states. Now, I do have a, if you go on to see Exhibit A in the resolution, it does talk about the fuel tanks. And it talks about replacement of the fuel tanks, connecting to the existing diesel and fuel dispensers that are there now. And I had the opportunity to go back and review the lease that we have with a boathouse. My understanding, reading the lease, it's very specific, and it states that they are responsible for that. So my question is, why is this a part of the resolution? And why are we bearing that expense? Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under the reading that, we've had this discussion, let me first state that with the City Attorney's Office, and I am aware that you could read the lease in that manner. But that's reading the lease in the context of a single clause, not the paragraph as a whole. The intent of that paragraph as a whole, that deals with when the city versus the lessor versus the lessee replaces the tanks, the intent of that paragraph is to outline when the lessee would be responsible. And so it specifically says if you're going to have a substantial replacement or repair due to, and there's about four items that are listed. And the intent of that basically is saying that if for some reason there was, there was damage or, or an issue, a consent order, some regulatory agency or something comes in outside of the city saying you need to replace it, then the lessee would, would be there. In reading it, I think, and I, and I am not really sure, because we haven't had a chance to discuss this prior to now, if the, if, if what you're suggesting is the intent that if, and the lessee was supposed to replace it no matter what, then it simply would have just said, "Lessee is, shall bear the cost of any repair and replacement." But that's not what it says. So I don't know how you'd like to move forward here, but our, our understanding based on what it says in the language is, this is not, this replacement is not due to the cause of an outside agency or an act other than the city. And so in that case, we would bear the cost.
There's also a sentence in there that states that the lessee shall not be obligated to reimburse lessor for any fuel tank replacement or repair done solely for the convenience of the lessor, which I understand this is.
Yeah, because the way I read the lease, and if council hasn't had the opportunity to, to read the lease, I, I would, I would strongly suggest that you do. Because I personally believe it's fairly crystal clear who's responsible. I know we may approve this ordinance or this resolution tonight, but I would hope that each one of my colleagues would go and read that particular lease and see what your interpretation is. And then if that is the same interpretation that I had, then we may want to direct staff differently. So I think that's important to, to do. With that being said, I will approve and support the resolution here tonight, you know, unless my colleagues had the opportunity to read that lease and maybe come to the same conclusion that I did. But it's definitely something that we need, if we approved it tonight, something that we need to go collectively and look at and have a discussion at a later time. Councilmember Long?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just to touch on that, I actually share that same sentiment. I had a discussion with the City Manager and in fact, Deputy City Attorney regarding that same clause. I was a little surprised to hear him speak in the alternative of what I understood it to be our, our mutual understanding yesterday, which coincides with what you thought to be the case. Lessor shall be responsible for the installation of the fuel pumps and associated equipment. Lessor, in this instance, of course, is the city. Lessor shall be responsible for the maintenance of the fueling area, et cetera. Lessee shall be required to pump fuel. In the event the fuel tank requires substantial repair or replacement, which in this event, of course, that box is checked, due to changes in the law, requirements of any regulatory agency, judicial or administrative order, or for any other cause not attributable to the lessor, which again, is the city in this case. That's not a cause, this, the reason that we're doing this is not a cause that's attributable to us. Lessee, which in this case is the tenant, will be required to reimburse lessor for any and all costs of such replacement or repair of the fuel tanks. So again, to follow along the lines of what you'd stated, I believe that's, that's fairly clear. I will say, that's something that we can discuss in the future. I think we can move forward with this resolution because the, the contract goes on, or the lease in this instance, goes on to say that those costs are reimbursable. So if we do incur these costs, that's a determination that we could still make in the future, and it wouldn't alter or affect us moving forward with the resolution as it's presented today. With regards to the other clause, with the convenience, again, I had a discussion with the City Attorney. I, it was my understanding that we walked away with a different opinion than what was just stated. Surely you could say maybe that this was for our convenience, but the alternative to that would be that we just would choose not to move forward with that and let that move forward until it comes to a point where they would be responsible for replacing it. So to just concede what is likely to be, I would imagine about $100,000, $150,000 in fuel costs or tank replacement costs for fuel that we don't receive any profit sharing from, and in this case, the tenant would be the recipient of that, seems foolish to me to, to concede that so quickly. But that would be my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stanky.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. In my, and I did have opportunity to review portions of the lease, particular to this matter with the City Manager's Office, and there's a distinction between the pumps and the tanks. And the pumps are dealt with one way, the tanks are dealt with a different way. And when the lease was entered into, there was a, if you will, a useful life evaluation made that in the negotiations of the lease, that the, the useful life of the tanks did not seem to be as long as the course of the lease, which the eventual lessee didn't want to be responsible for tanks that did not have enough life left in them, so to speak, that they would last through the duration of the lease. So that's just some extra information about the generation of that lease and the separation between the pumps and the tanks, and, and why the tanks are falling back on the, on the city's responsibility, the lessor, instead of the lessee. And if I'm wrong, please correct me.
There is, let me just make this statement. There is no regulatory agency or any other body or the lessee requesting that we change these tanks out. So I, I don't know, it says in black and white, it has to be, has to be something other than the city, and we do not have any, anything, not a letter, not a request, not a DEP consent order. So I, I-
Why are we changing, why are we changing the consent order? Change your form of design, or change the tank?
We're, we're replacing the tanks because we're about to invest tens of millions of dollars at the yacht club.
Sure.
And change the seawalls, pave the, pave parking lot paving, and just as we do in the UEP, we don't do a lot of at-grade work without replacing the subgrade work. And so we don't want to put all new pavement down there and all new greenscape and then come back in five years and have to tear it all up to replace the tank. The basis of this work is to perform it prior to us replacing all the seawalls.
Any other comments?
That's it, thank you.
Councilmember Stanky?
That's it.
All right. Like I said, hopefully at some point later on, we can have this discussion on, on the validity of the, of the lease and exactly what the intent of the lease was meant. Because like I said, when I read it, it, it means something totally different. And even if that's, if we have to have outside council take a look at it and make a determination as far as the lease is concerned. So with that being said, is there any other discussion on this item? If not, we need a motion for Resolution 152-23. Anybody want to make a motion?
I will make the motion for approval.
Second.
Any other discussion? See, and none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Shepherd. Stanky.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Costin.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
No.
Long.
Aye.
Seven ayes, one a, motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on to item 13, Resolution 156-23. Councilmember Hayden, you pulled this item, so you had the floor.
Yeah, I just wanted to note it in Exhibit Two, where we're approving a resolution from previous direction given by council, that under Exhibit Two, it talks about ensuring new building honors the history of the current building, referring to the yacht club, and also to develop a plan to reopen the beach. Other, other than that, I just, you know, that was kind of related to previous discussion on the, on the ballroom. Unless there's any other, I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any other council discussion? See, and none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Stanky.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Costin.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on to 9B, item 9B, appointments to boards and committee. B1 is the grievance committee. It says vacancies. Madam City Clerk, I know we have two applicants, could you, how many vacancies?
So, Your Honor, with this board, the vacancies are unlimited. We could have 10 members or we could have 100 members. It's just as many as we can add to the board over the years we try to, so that there is a, a, a group to choose from should a grievance come forward. Currently, I feel like I, I do have a shortage, and so I'm trying to make sure I continue to seek applicants for your consideration. And both applicants are here tonight, if council had any questions for them.
So what I'm hearing there, Madam City Clerk, is we could approve both individual, there's room on the board for these individuals?
Certainly.
Okay. With that being said, do, do I have a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve Mr. Church and Ms. Wrinkle to the, to the board.
Second.
Council discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Stanky.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Costin.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
Thank you. Item 9C is unfinished business. C1 is follow-up items for council. Any follow-up items for council? Okay, see, and none, we'll move on to item 9D, new business. D1 is stormwater utility rate study. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This item was intended to be presented as part of the budget retreat or summer retreat that we're having. However, our consultant was only able to make it today to give the presentation. So we're going to give the presentation today and have a discussion, but also if, if tomorrow during our retreat, we'd like to kind of revisit any of this, we'll do that then.
Thank you.
I'll turn it over.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For the record, Vercia Zambrano, interim Public Works Director. So as part of the budget cycle, every year, council has to approve the new stormwater fee that is going to be in effect for the following fiscal year. So as part of, every couple of years, we bring consultants to look at our, Stormwater Fee is an enterprise fund. They do calibration of everything that we do make a projection into the future, and typically, we have done this in the past in slow periods of five years. This time, we engage StanTech consultants, and they, they did, they run the model for 10 years. So I have with me tonight Kelly Westover and Peter Napoli. They're going to present their findings and recommendations to you. And as Mike mentioned, we will be available, staff will be available tomorrow. If you have questions and we want to talk about stormwater model, the fee, we will be there. Thank you. Kelly?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. Kelly Westover with StanTech. Pleasure to be here with you this evening. I also have Pete Napoli. We've both been working on the stormwater utility rate study for the city. This evening, we have a short presentation to share with you with our findings and recommendations, as was mentioned. We have done a 10-year revenue sufficiency analysis, that's item number one. We looked at your rate structure and methodology within your current ordinance. We have calculated some customer impacts and revenue needs. We also performed a review of your current credit program, and then we'd like to wrap up with some of our findings and next steps.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll take over to review the revenue sufficiency analysis slides, summarizing our results and the rate structure and rate design review that we performed on the assessment program and the current rate structure you have in place. This first slide here just summarizes the source data that we use in our financial model to construct the forecast of the stormwater divisions, personnel, operating expenditures, capital, et cetera. We, we start with your financial statements as of September 30th, 2022. That's where you ended your previous fiscal year and your, began this current fiscal year that we're in, fiscal year '23, when we load in your current year budget and we load in the preliminary fiscal year '24 budgets into the model, and those inform us of the expected personnel and operating, capital outlay, expenses, transfers, debt, et cetera. We also load in the multi-year capital improvement plan- We also load in the multi-year capital improvement plan into the model that includes all of the anticipated major significant capital projects related to the stormwater division. We've also layered in a schedule of FTE additions that were proposed and provided to us by staff in order to keep up with the stormwater requirements in the city and, and maintain the stormwater program. So you can see that table there lists out each year that these crews are being added and the associated personnel cost with hiring these FTEs, and also the operating and capital expenditures associated with these crews are included and layered into our financial This next slide here just gives you an idea over the 10-year forecast, how each type of expense shares the overall 10-year forecasted expenses. So you could see the 39%, that first slice of the dollar there is dedicated to capital expenditures related to the stormwater division. 42% is dedicated towards the personnel-related expenses, and then 19% is associated with O&M, operating, maintenance, supplies, repair and maintenance, et cetera. The goal of our study is to evaluate the sufficiency of the revenues that support these operations, and that's your stormwater assessments. And these revenues need to cover the salaries and wages, operating supplies, system maintenance, anything associated with regulatory compliance, the capital improvements that are projected, and any projected debt service. It is part of the city's policy that you maintain at least three months of operating expenses in the stormwater fund. However, we used a six-month target in our forecast in order to ensure that the city has adequate reserves for any unforeseen emergencies or natural disasters, and also for additional coverage support associated with debt. So some of the key challenges to the stormwater program that really drive the costs and, that are loaded into the model and the capital projects, obviously, it is a goal to reduce localized flooding, so also protecting against sea level rise in the city, improving water quality, and then a big component of the capital program is the utility expansion projects and stormwater share of those future projects. So we have the North 1, North 3, North 4, and 5 integrated into the capital plan. This, this slide here shows you the capital plan, the 10-year forecast. We have highlighted in the orange the costs associated with the utility expansion projects, the projected costs. There are some key initiatives and projects that we also highlighted as, including the aquatic vegetation harvesting, water quality management, ongoing water quality management, drainpipe, and catch basin replacement. And there, there are a number of other projects there for you to see. This, this slide here shows a snapshot of the dashboard from our financial model, and it essentially summarizes the projection of your fund balances in the stormwater fund. It also summarizes some of the expenses associated with that, and just kind of gives you a graphical representation of, of what we saw when we loaded up the model with all that data. So what you're looking at here is the diagnostic view. So what that means is it keeps your current stormwater bill the same over the 10-year forecast. And if you look to the upper left-hand graph there, that's where we show the projected fund balance in your stormwater fund. Under this scenario of maintaining the same rate over 10 years, the fund balance is depleted by fiscal year 27, and that is due to the dynamic shown on the right-hand, upper right-hand graph, where we show the projected cash out or expenses for the stormwater fund, the projected revenue for the stormwater fund. And you can see that orange line there is above the black line, which is, which means you're spending more than you're making if you kept the same rate. So this would not be a recommended scenario. The goal is to maintain sufficient fund balance in the stormwater fund and, and fund all of its operating and capital requirements. This next slide here shows a snapshot of the recommended financial plan, and this has rate increases built in, in each year, that begin with a $7 increase in fiscal year 2024, so next year. So that brings you from a single-family residential stormwater bill of $135 to $142. And then there are continual increases for the council to consider in the future, built into the model. This maintains the assessment revenues at an adequate level to cover all of your projected operating and capital expense requirements. This here is a benchmarking survey that we did. We included 27 other stormwater assessment programs around the state, and we included their annual rates here, so you could see how you stack up in comparison. The orange bar is where Cape Coral is at currently, at $135 for a single-family home, and the blue is the $142 that is recommended for next, for you to consider for next year, the $7 increase. So it actually maintains the same place in the survey, and you're hovering right around the average, which, which is about $130 a year, represented by that black line across the graph. So some key observations and guidance, the current revenue level at the, supported by the $135 rate, is not sustainable in the 10-year forecast for covering all of the operating and capital needs. The rate plan of annual increases ensure a sustainable fund balance into the future, and we suggest that you continue to monitor and update to account for any grants that may be received that could cover capital expenses in the future and bring down the future revenue requirement needs, or any changes in expenditure levels on the capital or operating side. And you're, you're sitting at a place where you're very comparable to surrounding peer communities at your current average stormwater residential fee. The next component to our analysis was to review the rate structure and rate design element of the stormwater fee. So the framework for designing stormwater fees is kind of summarized on this slide here. Your current basis for calculating the fee is estimated parcel impervious area, which means the area that doesn't absorb water and creates runoff and adds, contributes to the stormwater system. How much revenue is needed? That's based on your fiscal year 2024 projection, projected budget and, and future projections. And then how does it build? How do you apportion that cost across the units and different types, property types in the city? That's based on an annual assessment that's derived from ERUs, or equivalent residential units, that apportion that cost. And some of the objectives to balance, the framework for designing the fees are shown on the right-hand side there, your revenue needs, the proportionality of the fees, affordability, and simplicity. So our goal was to take a look at how the fee structure is currently set up and ensure that it is proportionally allocated across the city's different types of residence and property uses. Your current fee structure is based on an EDU value, which is essentially an average residential dwelling unit impervious area, and this was established by resolution, a study that was prior completed in 2002. So the EDU value is 3,296 square feet of impervious surface on average that was recorded back then, and it was validated again in 2015. This table here is just a little excerpt from the study that was performed in 2015, where they looked at the average impervious across the city and validated that the 3,296 is in fact still accurate and represents the average residential home. The current fee structure summary is shown here on this table. The single-family houses are apportioned 1 ERU per dwelling unit. You can see your total parcels there, there's 77,000 single-family parcels that are in the stormwater assessment program, and there's 84,000 ERUs. There's five property classes essentially, and each one is treated a little different in their, the calculation of their stormwater rate. And this just kind of summarizes the different property classes in your current structure. So you have multifamily, low-density, multifamily, high-density, non-residential, and then undeveloped. This is the chart of your current distribution of revenue by customer type. You could see single-family residences generate about 50% of the stormwater assessment revenue. The, the orange there represents multifamily, that's 7%. Non-residential is 15%, and then undeveloped generate about 28%. We performed an EDU value review similar to what was performed in 2015, which was based on Lee County property appraiser data. So we pulled all of the data on all of the parcels in the city. We looked at the area associated with impervious features on each parcel, and created a statistical average based on the residential category that yielded a result of 3,271 as the average impervious square footage. This is extremely close to what your current EDU value is. So essentially, we validated that the current EDU value is accurate and fairly portrays the average impervious within the city. You can see the distribution here of all the parcel area that we recorded, and the green shows what we calculated as of this current year, and then the orange shows what's adopted by resolution in the city. So some key observations and guidance, you currently have a one-size-fits-all fee structure for the residential property class, and, and that's supported in the statistical distribution that we looked at. There isn't a wide variance of impervious that's measured in the city. This review validated the city's current EDU value, and we validated the fact that the current rate structure is in fact fair and equitable, according to our experience in the industry and our observance of other similar assessment programs across the state. Your billing system works and is efficient, and there's an added layer of consistency for customers by not changing what you currently have in place. So the next few slides show some customer impacts for next year based on the recommended rate increase. So this shows a, a single-family customer impact, which is based on 1 ERU, meaning they pay $135 annually currently. In next year, that would be raised to $142, that's an increase of $7 annually, and that would be a monthly change of about 60 cents. This shows a multifamily property in the city. Currently, they are charged based on 5.9 ERUs, and, meaning they have 19,285 square footage of impervious surface. So their current annual assessment, and there's 10 dwelling units on here, is $796. They'd be raised to 837, it'd be an annual change of $41, and a monthly change of $3.40. This shows a non-residential property in the city. Currently, they are charged based on 21.6 ERUs, they have 71,158 impervious square footage. Their current annual assessment is $2,916, that would be increased to $3,067. That's an annual change of $151, and a monthly change of $12.60. This shows a non-residential property with a credit, meaning that they have stormwater features that offset their impact to the stormwater program. The ERUs are reduced, in this case, down to 9.7, even though they have 80,338 impervious square footage. So currently, they are charged $1,309, and their assessment would be increased to $1377, an annual change of $67, $68, and a monthly change of $5.66. And with that, I'll hand it back over to Kelly to discuss our analysis of the credit program. Thank you.
So we had an opportunity to review the credit program that you have in your current ordinance, and, you know, it's very common for communities with a stormwater fee to offer credits. So if property owners go through the effort to have onsite stormwater management, it can ultimately reduce the burden on the city to manage that amount of stormwater, it can reduce pollutants, it creates a good education component within the community when they understand how to manage stormwater and the benefits of it. So we looked at your current ordinance in comparison to a lot of the credit programs throughout the region. And there's really four main buckets of information that we look at. One is who's eligible to receive the credit? What are the activities that they have to do? Specifically, how much stormwater, what storm frequency, duration, things like that? What's the process and the policy to administer a stormwater credit program? And then what's the level of the credit? Does that make sense? And when we looked at your ordinance, you offer all developed property the opportunity to apply for the credit program. You have a very discrete quantification of the threshold for the qualification to get a credit, meaning do they have a South Florida Water Management District permit? Do they meet those requirements? Or if it was before that permitting agency, or it's not applicable, do they meet the same sort of basis of review? And then in the administration component, your staff does a great job from the records that we reviewed, and from what you have in the ordinance regarding the internal processes that they follow, the procedures, how they track, how they do inspections to verify that this onsite stormwater management is in place, is properly operating, properly maintained. So we were very impressed by that component. And then as far as the level of the credit, we did our own calculations based on a test year analysis, and looked at, it would probably be applicable to have a minimum credit of 35%. And your credit is 60% of the fee. So that definitely takes into consideration all the benefits that you're getting from encouraging onsite stormwater management. So we validated that 60% as well. So just to kind of wrap up and highlight some of the summary of the findings of the analysis, the current revenue is not sustainable, as Pete mentioned, and we've offered a rate plan of annual increases to fully fund the revenue needs for the system. In our review of the rate structure, we validated that it's fair and equitable, the billing system is working, and there's a lot of consistency. And then on the credit program, we felt that the ordinance was consistent with current standards and should continue as it is in place. So the overall project timeline, as was previously, previously mentioned, you do have an opportunity at your budget workshop tomorrow to continue the conversation with staff if needed. But you also have a July 28th initial assessment resolution to council to offer any rate changes at that point, and then an August 30th, a public hearing and final consideration for that assessment resolution. And then if that passes, October 1st would be the implementation of the fees. So we are happy to answer any questions that you may have this evening as well.
Thank you. Any, any questions from council? And it sounds like we'll have a follow-up discussion on this, Mr. City Manager, tomorrow's retreat?
Yes. If there's any specific questions that you have while the consultant's here, that, you know, we can get into that. And if not, we'll just pick it up again tomorrow.
Okay. Any questions for, for the, involving the presentation here? All right. Thank you. I appreciate you guys coming.
Thank you.
Okay. Item E is personnel actions. We do not have any listed. F is petitions to council, none listed. Follow-up items for city management, we do not have any listed. Item 10 is ordinances and resolutions. We do not have any public hearings as well. Item 10B is introductions. We have ordinance 147-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title, set the public hearing date.
Resolution 147-23. A resolution providing for the vacation of Platte for an alley and the underlying eastmans located between lots 1 through 11 and track A, block 2022, Cape Coral Unit 31, providing for the vacation of Platte, for Platte eastmans. for the vacation of plat for platted eastmans lying in lots 1 through 11, Block 2022, Cape Coral Unit 31, providing for the vacation of plat for platted eastmans lying in Track A, Block 2022, Cape Coral Unit 31, property located at the northwest corner of the intersection of northeast Pine Island Road and northeast 13th Avenue, providing an effective date. The public hearing will be scheduled July 12, 2023.
Is there any discussion by staff or council? Okay, seeing none, move on to ordinance 148-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title, set the public hearing date.
Resolution 148-23. A resolution providing for the vacation of plat for a portion of the Del Rio Court right-of-way and all underlying eastmans located adjacent to lots 11 through 13, Block 19, Cape Coral Unit 1, Part 2, providing for the vacation of plat for platted eastmans lying in Block 11, Lot 11, Block 19, Cape Coral Unit 1, Part 2, providing for the vacation of plat for platted eastmans lying in lots 12 and 13, Block 19, Cape Coral Unit 1, Part 2, property located at 5620 and 5624, Del Rio Court, providing an effective date. The public hearing will be July 12, 2023.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to item 11, reports. Councilmember Long, report.
No report.
Councilmember Shepherd.
No report.
Councilmember Stanky.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. On the 8th, I attended and represented the city at the Lee County Terrace Development Council, where I am not a voting member, but at least have a seat at the table. And I'm happy to report that with the help of Matt Grambo here today, got me prepared to make a presentation, to be prepared to, if you will, reapply for funds that we were denied. Not being a voting member, I was required to get the support of one of the voting members to make a motion and another to make a second, and that motion was made and was seconded and was unanimous approval for the county to hear our plea for a study that needs to be done and for them to pay for it, for us to apply for the funds that we were denied in this last go-round. On the 9th and 10th, I attended the Florida League of Cities Workshop for newly elected officials. It was a fabulous workshop. I learned a lot, got a lot of perspective on what other cities do and some options that we have available to us. Gave me a broader scope of how to do my job as best as I can. On the 12th was the liaison to the Budget Review Committee, and I'd like to commend Chief Lamb for the presentation that he had for that group as it relates to budget-oriented items that will be coming for our fire department. The 13th, yesterday, last night, I attended a quarter auction for our Cape Aquatic Swim Club. That was a very successful event. The kids were there, and all of them were very excited to see the turnout and the funding that was developed for them. And then today, had the pleasure of being at our first, our inaugural City of Cape Coral Flag Day event in Club Square. It had great attendance. There was media presence there. It was extremely well-prepared, and so hats off to our city staff and all those that were involved with having that prepared for and announced to our citizenry to honor our flag. And that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Welsh.
No report.
Councilmember Cosden.
Yes, just one thing. I'd like to wish Happy Pride Month to the residents of Cape Coral. Thank you.
Councilmember Cummings.
I just want to say thank you again for putting together Flag Day. I think this is huge for the veterans of our city, of our nation, to be recognized. And I just want to thank you. So I'm excited to look for the future as we grow with this. Stanky kind of hit base on a lot of things that we have done in the last week. I just also want to say I'm glad that we got a new city attorney today, so I want to congratulate him if he's watching, and everyone have a good evening. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hayden.
No report.
Mine's real brief. From June 8 to June 10, I attended the Florida League of Cities Executive Committee meeting and also participated in the nominating committee interviews as well, and also attended the inaugural Flag Day event this morning, honoring the American flag. Want to thank our city manager. I think he was the brainchild of bringing that forward. So thank you. It was a great event this morning to recognize our servicemen and to recognize what really our American flag stands for. So thank you for that. The only thing I would ask, Mr. City Manager, if you could forward to all of council the lease that we spoke about earlier with the boathouse, and if we have some time tomorrow in our retreat, if council has a time to review that lease between now and then, if we do have time, maybe we can have a little discussion on that. If we don't, then we'll have it at a later date.
Absolutely.
Mr. Deputy City Attorney, oh, and as Councilmember Cummings had mentioned, today, earlier today, we had a special meeting where we had three candidates that applied for the city attorney's position, which council, I'm sure collectively, we took that very seriously because that is a key position here in our city. We, by a vote of eight to zero, had picked a individual. So we are in the negotiating phase at this time with the contract. So hopefully, here within the next 60 days or so, we'll have a new city attorney. So I just want to make sure that the community was aware of that. With that, Mr. Deputy City Attorney, report.
No report.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of items for the community. This summer, the City of Cape Coral Parks and Recs Department is teaming up with the Lee County School District and the U.S. Department of Agricultural to host a summer break spot at Paul Sanborn, June 12 through July 29, excluding July 4. The Cape Coral Parks and Rec Fun Mobile will offer free games and activities from 10 to 2. And then also, the district will be providing free lunches to children and youth under 18 at Paul Sanborn Park from 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 every weekday. The City of Cape Coral is also hosting a multimodal transportation master plan. We are going to be holding our first public workshop on the transportation master plan Wednesday, June 21 at 4:00 p.m., and the workshop will be in the city chambers at City Hall. There is an open house for the Embers Parkway Median Improvement Project. So that is part of the budget this year. Council had appropriated funds to improve the medians. As part of that, there's going to be access management plans in order to get input from the community. There's going to be an open house Wednesday, June 28, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. to provide the public with information on what that project is slated to do and where the scope of the project is. And then lastly, we're going to be hosting, as you all know, our largest single-day event in southwest Florida, Red, White &amp; Boom, and that is going to be, it's the free event held on July 4 on Cape Coral Parkway at the foot of the bridge. Music and entertainment begins at 5, with our headliner Dylan Scott performing at 8. Fireworks will begin at 9:30. That concludes my report.
Okay, Councilmember Long, I see your light.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. I forgot to mention in my report that I will not be able to physically attend tomorrow's retreat. I am hoping that there's an opportunity for me to attend remotely. My apologies on that. That was due to a scheduling error on my end. Ms. City Clerk, are you able to confirm that I'm able to appear?
In the preparations for the retreat, I have added a component for that type of teens' participation. Now, we haven't run a test on it, but we can do that in the morning, maybe say 8 o'clock.
Thank you, ma'am. And then just one other thing. Did we already, or do we need to schedule or notice the meeting, the regular special meeting, I believe it was called, for the city attorney discussion?
Yeah, I got that here. That's next on the list.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Time and place for future meetings. We have a summer retreat scheduled for Thursday, June 15, 2023, beginning at 9:00 a.m. at McCollough Market here in the City of Cape Coral. Also, we have a special regular meeting to be held on June 26, 2023, at 4:00 p.m. here in council chambers, and that will be for additional discussions with the city attorney's position contract. Also, we have a regular meeting of the Cape Coral City Council scheduled for Wednesday, July 12, 2023, beginning at 4:30 p.m. here in council chambers. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.